Hello, Councilor?
Yes. 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 This time we ask everyone to turn off their cell phones like I just did. And please stand with me. Under public acknowledgements, our Council Vice President, Congressman. Thank you, Council President. About two months ago, there was a contest that was held. And the contest was for all aspiring artists in all the high schools in the state to submit our work. And it was called the Jack Reed High School Arts Competition. I believe there were several hundred submissions. And a woman from Cranston won the award. So her painting will now be displayed in Jack Reed's office for the next year. So the council has a citation for her. And she'll come up here and I will read the proclamation to you. You know, all the friends in the council, everybody is a citation. Alexander Smith, Cranston High School West. First place winner of US Senator Jack Reed's 2013 Annual High School Arts Competition. The entire council is congratulating him very generously on his memorable event and express his hope for continued success in the following years. Congratulations for that. Please note that Council Mayor Leo Favecchio and Council Mayor Jariro Harkett are seated now. Public hearings. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any docketed item? Please limit your time to four minutes.
Mr. President, my name is Patrick Doherty. I apologize. Mr. President, my name is Patrick Doherty. I'm an attorney with offices in there against Rhode Island. And I represent the applicants, Nancy McGovern and Justin Pasqual for a zone change that is on for action at the council this evening. It's received favorable reviews by the planning commission, by the planner. It is really just a housekeeping matter, so to speak. It's an island that is designated C5 in a four residential district. And the application is sought in order to make it consistent with the land use plan and the comprehensive plan. And I believe that there's been no opposition whatsoever. And I would move for its passage and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who'd like to speak on any docketed item?
Richard Thomas, 400 Farmington Avenue, Cranston. On the ordinance for water. It talks about fees, but it doesn't say what the fees are going to be to the general public. It just talks about what the interest rate will be added if you miss your payment. So that brings to my mind maybe another problem. What I think we ought to know is what is their collection rate? Is it anywhere near Mr. Strom's? If it's much lower than Mr. Strom's, and maybe this is an effort to try to make up for their lost money. And also, the increase in our fees may be the same thing for the same reason. But I don't see anything in this ordinance that addresses those concerns. The vittuas license, subject to the General Assembly. I may have missed something here, but it says their license is above the cap number 77. I'm not sure what that means. Maybe that can be explained during public hearings. Also, on Santa Maria's for the licenses for fireworks. I didn't see, I may have missed it. Does that also include individuals or organizations like the fee society? Or is this just for individuals? I don't think that's spelled out. And for the moment, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public who'd speak on any docketed item? Hearing over, I close the public hearing portion of this council meeting. On the resolutions. Resolution urging the General Assembly to introduce and pass legislation authorizing the city of Cranston to be exempt from provision of RLGL 3-7-19, 1255 Resor Avenue, sponsored by Safety Services License Committee. Motion to approve the resolution? Second. Motion was made in second. Any discussion concerning this resolution?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Because this is new business, it would only be referred to committee. We need a motion to suspend RL34B so they can be taken up this evening. But I wouldn't go to committee.
Could you read your...
I will retract my motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to make the suspend is your second? Second. Any discussion concerning the suspension? Councilman C. Turey, Asa Sarishtakos. I was just going to ask, what's the rush on this?
Councilman C. Turey? Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to speak on this. The cilantro is applying for a liquor license at the old Defendi's Restaurant. General Assembly law has been in the books for a while. Says a liquor license cannot be within 200 feet of a church. This is 190 feet from a church, or up to 10 feet. So this resolution will ask the General Assembly to give us a dispensation of 10 feet so that cilantro's can come in and have a liquor license at the old Defendi's. I would note that the House Bill is 6121 and the Senate Bill is 954. They are both being heard in committee. So it's not a rush, but as you know, the General Assembly will probably start in their budget soon and then they get out in the end of June. So if we don't do it now, we'll have to wait till January. This is a chain that has several locations. We want them in Cranston. So Senator Gallo is pushing the Senate Bill and Representative Holombo is pushing the House Bill. So it's not really a rush, but it's a sense of urgency, let's put it that way.
Any other discussion concerning this? I'll make a quick comment on it. We try to encourage businesses to relocate to the city of Cranston. And if we wait and put this to another committee hearing, the General Assembly will be closing. Councilman C. Turey is absolutely correct. We'd have to wait till January. And to hold up the business until January, it's not fair if we can avoid it. Councilman C. Turey?
Yes, Council President. For the record, we heard this in Safety Services and there were any objections at all other than the fact that there was an issue with the 10 feet. So we heard public hearings on this. I don't believe anybody from the public came, Mr. Chairman, to speak against it. So we did hear this and it was a full session in public and it was in committee.
Councilman C. Turey, may I add one other thing?
Yes, Councilman. If this does pass, if we can get it to the mayor's desk real quick so we can get it up to the General Assembly, because they're waiting for this before they pass it. When I found out, I was furious. Representative Jack Doherty?
Through the chair. The resolution does require the mayor's signature. As soon as it's signed, I'll be sending a PDF stamped copy to the Cranston delegation first thing tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilman Box?
Through the chair, it's my recollection too. If any did have a liquor license, did they not? But we know the reason why. I've done it there a few times and I do recall.
Because the building that moved and the church never moved, so.
Right. It was a sleight of hand with the mission and I guess I don't know. Maybe church are moving.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, is there a motion? No, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee, yes, second?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion to approve the resolution? Motion was made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Just one question. I don't know if any research was done during the interim between the last hearing, but I don't know if the owner will need anything from the church to give to the General Assembly just on their approval of the... Because they had no objection as far as we're aware.
Yes, actually, Representative... My name is John Palmer. I'm the owner of the line for the wheel with the legislature. And Representative Jean-Carlo spoke to the church and received a letter of approval from the church before he acted on it on sponsoring the bill. So he's already familiar with the church. Yeah, that should X, but I hope everything is ready and speaking and thank you for your help here.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Report of committees. On this committee, our chairman, Harkett.
Thank you, Council President. There was one issue. It's ordinance 4-13-5, ordinance in Amendment of Chapter 17, Code of City of Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning, 167 Hill Street. There's no vote taken on this, Council President, it was a hearing. Due to the fact that the zoning matter was come to the full council.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve? Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. On this committee, Councilman Sarishtakos.
All right, we have the real estate intangible tax abatements as recommended by the assessor. That was unanimously passed by the Finance Committee.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we have the resolution authorizing the motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the assessor. This was also approved by the Finance Committee.
Motion approved, second. Motion was made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, the last item is an ordinance to do with the sewer fees for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And this includes the 5% rate hike that is the first part of 25% rate hike over the next five years in order to comply with the emission requirements of the Department of Environmental Management, particularly to lower the nitrogen levels, to upgrade the plant, to lower the amount of nitrogen that's discharged from the plant. This was also recommended by the Finance Committee and we did talk about it in the budget also. So we need a motion for passage.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Christian Baum. The nitrogen levels that we are currently being forced to pay our court for the next five years constantly leading to the manner correct, those improvements? Sorry, I have a question on the improvements that we have to raise our sewer taxes by 5% per year for the next five years. Those improvements basically would be jargon.
Well, when we did our facilities plan amendment, our facilities plan amendment is premised upon the fact that the landfill is leaving. If the landfill weren't leaving and we're still taking their pollutants on, it costs us another $25 to $30 million. So we're actually saving money by having a landfill leave.
All right, I was making... That would make you concerned.
The real reason for having to do the upgrade is that historically, there was this, four or five years ago, there was this event called the fish kill. And it was due to the elevated nitrogen phosphorus levels, which causes a lot of fish to die. So EPA went up along East Coast targeting sewer treatment plants because that's who they had control over. And they forced everyone to roll their permits. So we naturally have to roll it anyway. We would have had to do it wrong by law if the landfill had stayed.
Okay, thank you. Councilman C. Turey?
Mr. Councilman, can I follow up to the solicitor? One more question on that?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the landfill, are they... How are we holding them accountable for previous discharge to put us above that level?
We can have an executive session on that anytime we want. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Title 8 of the Code of City of Cranston appeared before the Public Works Committee and it passed with unanimous recommendation.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion, Councilman Harkett?
Thank you, Council President. I want to commend my colleague, Councilman C. Turey, for initiating this legislation. It's a very good piece of legislation. I mean, several complaints this year and more last year came to pick up. So I want to commend my colleague and ask if I can be a co-sponsor on this legislation.
Clerk, please note that Councilman Harkett will be a co-sponsor.
Councilman C. Turey, thank you, Council President. I want to add to Councilman Harkett's comments. This was a bipartisan effort. I know Councilman Box had issued his word and Councilman Favecchio was a strong advocate making sure that there were no pickups before a second. So this was a team effort. So I thank my colleagues.
Vice President Corino?
I asked that the committee meeting to be had as a sponsor of this, so I figured I'm his sponsor as well.
Would you like, Councilman Corino, any of us co-sponsors? And you also have to co-sponsor? Councilman Box?
Sure, why not? I also have a comment too. You know, Councilman C. Turey really was a standout in this effort. And again, I'd like to commend him on this. He has a good bead on what's going on with the refuse pickups in the area. So he was a good source to go to. So great job. I myself also had numerous complaints along behind the houses behind us where I had us to pick up dumpsters. So again, it's great legislation, so thank you.
Any other discussion? I'd like to comment that it was a great bipartisan effort and anybody should be commended on it. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Safety Services License Committee, Councilman Santamaria. Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 41301, ordinance of the City Council Amendment of Title 5, Code of City of Cranston, 2005, Title of Business Licenses and Regulations, Fireworks Vendor License, this passed committee unanimously. This is basically, I'll read it as basic as I can, where only allow fireworks, packaged fireworks, to be sold in a permanent structure. They could not be sold in a temporary structure, ala tennis or Neatoo's or anything else. They have to be in a permanent structure. Again, this was a bipartisan effort. The committee felt they wanted tent city in Cranston. They wanted some vacant buildings to be rented for a couple of months to help with landlords. So this ordinance will make it so that they have to be sold in a permanent structure. I recommend approval. Motion to approve? Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? All right, earlier on the public comments, somebody mentioned the fact that how this would affect St. Mary's with the fireworks. It wouldn't at all, and that's why I was... Okay. Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to commend Councilman C. Turey on this as well. Yeah, I think it was done to protect St. Mary's feast as well. We don't want any vendors on the street selling fireworks. And we've seen that in Newark and other cities and it's terrible. And I'm sure that there's so much risk in that. Kids could get access to at least fireworks very easily and they could be stolen and it's just a bad situation. So I fully support this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Class B vittuas license above the cap. We already discussed this in the resolution we passed. This is the liquor license for cilantro Mexican grill, CNG Holi LLC, DBA cilantro Mexican Grill. Again, this passed based on General Assembly approval. So I don't know if I put the cart before the horse, but I don't see why we can't pass it now. So I recommend a passage.
Didn't we already... Whatever, Council President. Didn't we already do it? But that's the resolution. Is this different from the resolution, Councilman? I know it's on the docket, so I'm assuming we didn't do it.
Um, you take the chair?
Yes.
Um, when we approved the resolution, requesting the General Assembly create the exemption was the first vote. This is on the docket because this license, this is the approval of the liquor license because it's where it's overcame.
Correct. And it's if anyone is not transpired, that is...
It does require approval.
Okay. All right. If questions are required, if we pass this, the General Assembly does not pass our resolution. This is void.
That's correct. The approval is contingent. The motion should reflect that the approval is contingent upon passage of the exemption by the General Assembly.
Council President, should we amend that? What you just said in front of the motion so that it...
There's an amendment. I would amend it just to be on the safe side.
I need that amendment that we approve this license above the cap, subject to the General Assembly approving it based on the situation.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Now, on the original motion and the ordinance as amended, any discussion? Is there a motion? Motion approved? Second. Motion made in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Moving on, Claims Committee, Councilman Lee?
I'm reporting the settled claims. There was just one to Deborah Devene...
I don't know if we know.
Benedetto for $50 for her mailbox. That is it?
One claim?
One claim?
We're doing good this month. Any discussion on one claim?
The weather's improving.
It's not snowing. Very young. You don't have to write that. All right, thank you. Public hearings, open to the public and any docketed or docketed. Anybody in the public who'd like to speak on any docketed or docketed item? Please step forward. Any new address or record?
I was showing from 7th Park Street and as you all know, I've been doing this a long time. And usually people come up here to gall at you with bad news, but I have good news to tell you. Another Princeton public school student graduated from West Point on 7th. So congratulations.
Anybody else in the public who'd speak on any docketed or docketed item?
Which of you turns forward before we come in? Just a quick, uh, note on the passage of the water fee. First of all, we got headlines out of saying that we're not going to have any increase in taxes. Then I heard the rumor the council had nothing to do with it, it was out of their control. And yet you just voted for it, number one. Number two, who did the Rithwa take care of? It's 5% every year. It's not 25%. It's compounded. So what is the real increase? Has anybody done the Rithwa check? If it was a dollar, now $25 each year, okay. So how do we pass things? And you send it to the public and you don't even know what you're sending. You're so anxious to pass it for some reason that I don't know. And there's a third part of that too. Why don't they, in their financial statements, have money set aside for what they're supposed to do? Do they wait till the building crumbles and then come and ask for more money from the public? That's what it is. That's what it sounds like. This is a very, very poor operation I see before me. You have not done the homework. And you have not listened to anybody. And the problem is nobody shows up and everybody talks about it. But there's really no advertising as to what goes on in the state. And certainly at the council. And that leads me right into why I'm standing up. It's the same thing. You've all recognized, I don't know where you're coming from. You saw for Memorial Day, you saw another picture of Iwo Jima, a loop norman at the home. What have those people who lost everything did? They put a flag up. What does that mean to you? What does that mean to this council? That we're going far beyond what we really should be doing? And the things on these... Lester, I wrote about it, a little bit jazzy, Lester Cranston is a joke. That was the worst council meeting I have ever attended. The three Republicans come up with, they have pulled the yes out of them. And basically it was, I was for it before I was against it. And then you had Senator Bladen Allen. What the hell did that have to do with that program? And then you had Sarishtakos talking about labor down in Providence. What has that got to do? And nobody, I heard rumors, whether something else coming along is going to be bigger and better. What is it? When will it be proposed? And you know anything that you propose is going to have opposition. So we're going to sit here, two, three, four years later, and you're doing nothing to raise revenue and this state needs it. To point out once again, this is America, fellas. Each one of you raised your hands to... To all of us, to all of us, and the Constitution. And you're not following it. That, as I said, that was a backroom deal if I ever heard of it. And so was that...
Point of view, we stopped to get into attacking my character. I... I was at the implication and I asked you to stop.
Well, that's too bad. I have a freedom of speech and the train should have a right to. And if you're sitting there thinking you're never going to be attacked, get out of that chair. This is what America's all about. Do you see what goes on in the floor, the Senate and the House? You see what they call each other, names? That's why I'm standing up here for the...
Mr. Thomas, you call it a backroom deal. That's a fuck on our character. Do you have any proof of that?
Yes, I do, Council President. And I ask you to stop. The results prove it. The results prove it. The laws prove it. Is that the mayor did, Mr. Thomas?
If you come up with...
Yeah, sure.
Number one, backroom.
Number one, backroom deal.
Yes.
You have absolutely no proof of anything in that because there was no backroom deal.
Then what was the deal?
Everybody on this council voted their conscience. They voted what their constituents wanted, and they voted, and they voted what they had to do at that particular time. Because you disagree with this council, that doesn't mean you're right. Matter of fact, they didn't do it. You are absolutely wrong.
Again, and you don't go in downtown labor if you got some real reason why that shouldn't be there. And everybody knows, they always come up with this business on traffic. There's a traffic problem there for years. Does anybody come here complain about it until they have something like that? And basically, that's what you voted on.
Council President, if you know some lies, just not be for us tonight. This is, this is really not about nothing.
No, it's not really about nothing. That's the problem. You don't understand, you said that too wrong. That's very important, that's a tax issue. You just raised our taxes probably on a compounded basis. So, you sent a forty percent on our water, and no discussion.
Please, please, wrap up your discussion, it's under over four minutes. I know I have.
One last thing, same way on that nightclub in my territory. Now, that was another backroom deal. Nobody objected to that.
Council President, again, again, again.
Mr. Santos, that's a backroom deal. We all know what went off in that place where it was opened before. And Mr. Fernando said, no, no, don't worry about it. We're overvoting on the license tonight. And everybody on the council, either if you gave the license that was turned up to a Republican to have a license on. So, you're not doing your job. And you are doing jobs that we don't see up here. We don't see it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. For wanting to be a vote of confidence. Uh, we, uh, I just think it looks like two Republicans in the council, not three. Please, you know, Mr. Thomas is incorrect. He cannot count the Republicans, the two in this council, you agree? Unless one of the members of the council secretly tied you in.
Look, Council President, with all the backroom deals, with all the backroom deals, you know, we all must be hiding hidden things amongst one another.
I just wish I would tell you where the backroom is, panel, I'm missing.
Yeah.
You're missing. In all honesty, this council, we, on the bottom, has been a bad word from date. Let me put that. The national accusation, as Mr. Thomas did. It's a period for. Isn't this, they need this council, but every taxpayer and every voter who elected needs this council.
It's meant to be.
And I apologize for him because I think he got wrapped up in his speech, and he didn't realize what he was saying. If there's any proof of any backroom deals, please bring it forward.
Your actions prove it. Your actions prove it.
Please bring it forward. Any proof, police department, the FBI, the attorney general, whoever you wish. And I could take a lie detector test and show it to this council. We are not thieves. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for your vote of confidence. Moving on. Elections, city officials? Are there no elections, any city officials that I'm not able to? Back to the agenda. Yes, please, come forward. Sorry, I'm going to close it without asking. I see that.
My name is Nicole Anderson, I live in Providence, but I run a coffee truck that is registered in the city of Cranston called Joe Vega. And I'm here speaking on behalf of Eric Green, who is the owner of trucks, foodtrucksin.com, which is a website that's supporting food trucks, particularly in Rhode Island and throughout the country as well. There's a bunch of food truck owners that have been meeting with the owner of the food bolognese that would like to make a food truck event happen on Wednesday evenings. There's about eighteen trucks that have shown interest in getting together and having this Wednesday night regular event. And we're all prepared to pay the two hundred and fifty dollar licensing fee to upgrade our food trucks in Cranston, sorry. But we came to find out that there's also an additional one hundred dollar temporary structure license that we're all gonna have to get as well. And I'm just here to sort of be a voice for the food truck owners. And we'd love for you to keep us in your minds when trying to help us welcome our business into your city.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Oh, all right, there's a couple more things that we haven't had in the conversation.
We've been speaking for about six minutes, I guess we need.
We have six now, five six minutes? I don't know.
No. We're being facetious.
Sorry, I'm a little bit unimpressed. Um, we understand that the Safety Services Committee, I think is what it's called, is proposing next week an ordinance making it available to food trucks to operate within one thousand feet of an existing restaurant. And we'd just like to say that's extraordinarily unfair to someone like me who owns a coffee truck that I couldn't be within a thousand feet of, say, a Mexican restaurant where we're not competitive business at all. Ice cream truck parked within a thousand feet of Italian restaurants, no threat to establish business on that level. Food trucks are super popular, there's a growing trend throughout the country, and Rhode Island particularly is really getting on board with that. There's over forty food trucks operating in Rhode Island right now. We'd love to see our applications for our licenses to operate in the city of Cranston be handled administratively. Right now, we've been talking for the past maybe three or four weeks about doing these lines bolognese events on Wednesdays. But because our applications can't be handled administratively, we now won't be able to have our license applications even considered until July fifteenth. It's just another situation where the climate for coming into food truck business is not really up to speed. Food trucks are new, and there's a lot of ordinances that don't exist to consider us, and we're just asking that you take us into consideration on that level as well. I think that might be everything that I'd say. My food truck is registered to the city of Cranston to a corporation called Jet Blackink. I just work for them. And I'm particularly interested in being the hometown sort of truck, being able to do business in a friendly city that the truck is registered in. And I guess that's it. Thank you for your time.
Counsel President, previous, thank you, Council President. I just want to clarify for the record, we had a previous speaker who was babbling about these, I only quoted a bit of it, but evidently a couple of those didn't go as well, and he's mad at the city council. But he referred to Councilman Sito, by name, I think, twice, and that should have been Councilman McKettle, I believe, so just wanted to clarify on the record. Thank you. Both of you, last thing, start with an A, so maybe you're confused. Thank you, is there any to add tonight?
That's all, thank you, right?
Thank you very much. Anybody else who needs to be documented or undocumented item? Seeing the man. Executive Communications? The administration have anything to report?
Thank you, Council President. Creston Fire Department Lieutenant John Brewer has requested a continuation in service. Lieutenant Brewer has not all the necessary requirements, we urge your approval.
Motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Maria?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Creston Police Department Captain Gerard Conaval has requested a continuation in service. Captain Conaval has not all the necessary requirements, we urge your approval.
Motion made, second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Maria?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Yes. And finally, Creston Police Department Officer Jeffery DuKlos has requested a continuation of service. Officer DuKlos has not all the necessary requirements, we urge your approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Counselor Lee? Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Maria?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Okay. On the Council of Communications, very quickly, I'd like to say that I read a paper last week where the state revenue has overestimated the revenue. And I hope that the adjusted revenue laws that the state can apply to not affect the transition city budget or the school community budget because we do depend on state aid. I talked to the administration to choose, and they feel confident that if there was a small shortage, we'd be able to cover it because we have such a conservative budget, which is the difference. The bad news is I lost my tip earlier, and I apologize to this council for doing so. But when people disrespect this council, and limit to this council, it upsets me because I know what a good job you all are doing. Moving on, Council McKettle, on the Council Communications, Council on Communications.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I requested a discussion of councilmen's relationship to the programs and also council relationship to, councilperson's relationship to city employees. Just so, for the record, last week, I did call Mr. Lopez on Monday, left a message. I did not get my phone call returned. I called last Wednesday, and same issue. My phone call was not returned. I called last Thursday, and I tweeted a message because his mailbox was full. So, on three occasions last week, I had no contact with the Director of Administration as far as returning phone calls. And at that point, you know, I was very near whether to call the Director or not. So, before I take that plunge, I need to find some type of boundary line on what merits me to call the Director if I can't get in touch with the Director of Administration. Mr. Lopez, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, as the council is aware, I have a city phone which I had the city clerk in the world send out to the council people. The phone number that the councilman has been calling is my personal number. Unfortunately, I've had some problems with that phone number, and I'm not getting messages out here.
Okay.
This particular councilman seems to be the one who's having a problem getting hold of me. So, I don't know if there's some sort of issue that I'm not aware of. And as far as I'm concerned, the, um, we, we saw each other Friday at a function, and you know, we've had several opportunities to talk. So, I'm not that difficult a person to get a hold of. And I think the eight other councilpeople that are here can attest to that that I'm very much available, even times after hours, weekends, holidays, or even when I'm homesick. So, if there's a particular issue that this councilman has with getting hold of me, I'd be happy to discuss this after the council meeting. In addition, the councilman has not had any other communication problems with the administration, being that I have an update from my Director of Constituent Affairs who has been diligent in working on multiple universe requests that have come from this particular councilman. So, in addition to this claim that he's having difficulty working with, getting a hold of us, I can tell you that there is a kind of sign whose, you know, the Director of Constituent Affairs has, since the end of May, has received seven constituent requests from this councilman, two of which are pending, which one is a true term in the room, which has to wait until July first because of the budget. And even as late as today at two thirty PM, this particular councilman has had five additional requests for constituent issues that the administration will follow with. So, as far as the claim that there's poor communication, no responsiveness from the administration, I would beg to differ. I'm just saying, I told you about my emails, I'm just saying, I called you three times last week, I never get a phone call back, that's basically the question. I have an email here, and Marissa hasn't returned my emails, and we haven't returned yours. But the fact that I reached you and answered your question, as far as if I can't contact you, my answer is fine, and I can't see a problem if I need to request information from the Director that I can't call. There's no, there's nothing that prohibits me from calling the Director if I need information. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Quinlan at this point.
Well, it's simply had a discussion about a language in the charter that does restrict a councilmember from ordering any member of any department to do anything. Certainly, you know, working through Directors or the central contact for the administration is something that it accounts for his power. And, you know, the old question that appears to be is a problem with one of the phone numbers, maybe that he's giving to Mr. Wallace, maybe. But ultimately, you do have a right to call this Director and pose your questions or pursue your constituent request, which apparently we're also doing with Marissa. So, I think we'd clear up the phone number issue, maybe we can buy this.
All right, thank you. So, basically, look for the room from the politicians, I can call any Director I choose for a fact-filing request that'll pass out constituent requests, is that correct?
No, I, that is not, now, what I meant to say to you, what I'm saying is that you can work, we do have a designated administration through which you can work, but there appears to be some telephone issue here, which I know is off tonight. We'll pass that, but they have asked us to pass the council and focus all of the complaints to one individual for reasons of follow-up. If, you know, if you're being ignored by a person and left messages, and they are not giving, you know, and right now he's trying to correct the number, I'm sorry, that was the issue. So, you know, I think because of that language in the charter, which I think is extreme, I don't understand the history of that language in the charter, but it's extreme, it puts any councilman at risk should they reach beyond, you know, the administration's contact points. I think that's something we'll address in the future, and I know we'll be willing to work with you on that. But I think currently, you know, your obligation under the charter, the safest way is to deal with the Director.
Fine, I just for the record, every Director in every, you know, who does not work for the mayor or the Director of Administration, they work for the taxpayers of the city of Cranston. And I've been elected by the taxpayers of the city of Cranston, so if, if, you know, even if I call a Director, he's not gonna act, he's gonna call the Director of Administration or the mayor anyway. So, I just don't understand this, this red tape that we have to go through, basically postpones the eligibility. But I don't have a problem with it if the Director of Administration is the one who's that person is accessible and returns my phone calls. My phone calls are not returned, I have a problem. You would join the session with Mr. Lopez? Yes, thank you, Council President. And just for the record, Jerry Cordy is the Director of Administration, and I am the Mayor's Chief of Staff. So, just, just so that I'm clear, and, you know, as a token of goodwill to show you how much we love you and the administration, I have something for you, Councilman McKettle. I have in my possession a disc with your picture with Miss U.S. from last year, which you've been hounding me for over a year. No, this was last year. So, I have this with me as a token of my, of your faith. Hopefully, all kidding aside, we'll get our communications straightened out, and, you know, the councilman knows very well that he has a written bill that I sent, you know, as far as the communication problems are concerned. I did ask the city clerk to forward my city, official city phone number, and I do ask that the council people please use that number because I may be getting a little personal to switch to another company. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? You know, would you, Council, to say any kind of council negotiations? Council senior?
Thank you, I have two. I would like to take what you had on the bus stop with the docket, they announced it by the administration. I have three that I'd like to just list, Council President, if I may, to the administration. Can I get an update on keyword? Uh, we're gonna check the, we're gonna clean up the area next to Peter School, and we're gonna check the pipe to make sure that the water's flowing, because there's been some flooding issues in that area. That's number one.
Through the chair. Yes, sir. That was cleaned actually last week on both sides of the colbert, which we do every year. We were just there a little early this time. And secondly, regards to mosquito treatment, we will be starting that the first of next week, and that'll be a weaker area than normal because it has been getting long. Okay?
Also, the bottom of the Marlow Street, it goes down the hill where it meets Palmfield Pike. I recalled to the administration once before, and I think it was fixed, that when the water use, a rainstorm digs up over the asphalt, if you, if you could send a highlight by, you'll see there's a lot of damage. The end of Marlow near the Pike. We're looking at that zone. And lastly, Marathon Street, Phoenix Truck and Baraki before we slapped the administration last stop turn to get a, or a VPR license. They were, they were denied the committee and went to the full council and got approved on, on appeal. And they told the council at that time that they would not operate the bays facing Mathon Street houses. I could talk to you about this, Jerry, Mr. Cordy, I'm sorry, and you sent inspections by today, and they said that they are operating bays across from the residents, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Today was at least one bay. Uh, other than that, I don't have any further information, but yes, sir, there was one bay open that faced the residential area.
Okay. Council President, at this time, I'd like to have a look for show cause, to see why they're not doing what they told us they were doing under oath, I need to say.
As Chair of Safety Services, I, we do call out any, I have no problem with it.
Okay. We'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow, we can get on the July 5th.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If I may, they are actually on, at the draft of the agenda for Monday for the interim, because they expire July 1st. So, what I will do is ask the owner of the applicant to, to appear, um, to address the issues with the committee.
That does it for me. Thank you. And remember the council, Council Stipos. First of all, there have been some questions about the Audit Committee, and we will not be having a meeting of the Audit Committee until August at the earliest, because at this point, the auditors aren't even looking at the city's books, the fiscal year hasn't ended yet. And if there are questions about the city's financial condition, I would suggest bringing them up at a Finance Committee that's always attended by Bob Strong. That's the first item. The second item is that Mr. Tomlin's made the statement that we approved an increase in the sewer fee without knowing what we were voting on, with no discussion. And the sewer fee was proposed as part of the Mayor's budget, it was discussed during the budget process. The administration hired someone to do projections of what money was needed and what rate hikes would produce, what revenue. They looked at a couple of scenarios, four percent a year, I believe they looked at six percent a year in this report, and five percent produced the money that is projected to be needed in order to do this improvement. Should the, um, should the, the upgrade cost less, I would anticipate the administration in the later years, let's say the fourth or fifth year, coming in and saying, you know, we've saved some money, we don't need five percent. But that was looked at by the Finance Committee, by the administration, provided us with a copy of that study, I can't remember the name of the guy who did it, but I just wanted to make that point. Thank you. Councilman Boss.
Thank you, President. Through the chair, Director Cordy, if I may, just something came to mind. I was on a, you're about to break, full mount run yesterday, and I ran down Burnside Avenue Street, right over here, in 56 Burnside. I happened to notice the lawn was pretty overgrown, and the property looked like it might be abandoned or for sale. I was curious if that's on the city's radar as far as inspections, payment, visit, if you, if, I don't know if you know, if you can look into that. So, I will look into it, and if it's not on our radar, we'll get it on the radar. Thank you. And my other thing is, again, referring to Mr. Tomlin's speech earlier regarding the lodges, you know, he mentioned a few things, one of which was the Constitution, and, you know, we're here to govern by the voice of the people. In that particular meeting, or the series of meetings, there was a strong voice by the people in that area that were against this project. And again, I'll reiterate the fact that on the face of the project, I was in favor. And given the residents' reaction and their succinct arguments as to why that project should not be there, that is what changed my mind, and no other reason at all, no backroom deals, none of that. And to suggest otherwise, I was an affront to everyone on this council, and, um, I personally take offense to that. So, again, we're elected here by the people, so we're here to represent them. I don't particularly represent the people of Ward 4, but, you know, the opposition's particularly strong, and it convinces me otherwise, and if any other project comes up, and that opposition is, again, that strong, again, I will vote for what the people want. Thank you.
Councilman Ford. Thank you, Council President. I'm the Councilman Boss, I do represent the people of Ward 4, in Ward 1, in Ward 2, in Ward 3, in Ward 5, in Ward 6. I represent this whole city, and I was elected to serve as a councilman, and I was chosen by this council to serve as its vice president. Every member of this council, sitting here tonight, was duly elected, fairly elected, and takes this charge very, very seriously. To assume that at any time, any one of us breaks any rule or any law and commits perjury or lies or has a backroom deal is an affront to this council and this city. And, Mr. Tomlin, if you don't like it, you should sell your house, eat your salad grapes, and leave.
I'll be behind you.
No, you won't.
I'll be behind you. Why did you make this statement?
Mr. Vicino.
You made that statement, you never called.
Councilman Vicino?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Council, uh, President. For the record, for the record, I've already spoken to the administration, I've spoken to Representative Mariela, I've spoken to the Council President, I've spoken to the Council Vice President, that as soon as this legislative session gets done there, I've asked that, uh, eleven of the administration, members of DOT, and that we could have a series of community meetings in Western Cranston to address some of the issues. They did a great job when they did up road, which used to be an old carriage horse road. There are other roads of issues that we need to bring to the attention of the state. As the Council President knows, it took a while to get that stopped right on Phoenix Avenue. So, I think that that is in the forefront of working on that traffic issue, and if any local people have other traffic issues in their roads, I'd be happy to work with them, and their roads also. So, that is in the works, it's a matter of timing, I'm willing to get everybody together, but we'll try to take that objection to any other development that's happening in Western Cranston or maybe at that spot, if necessary. Thank you.
Any other member of the council? Uh, Council McHale.
Thank you, Council President. Just like to make a announcement to the Flood Commission, we're meeting next month, June. It's not posted on the county map, but it's June 18th?
It's June 17th, is that it?
Yeah, June 18th, that's a Tuesday, correct? June 18th, 2032, Flood Commission, 16.
License fee to be referred to safety services for hearing on June 3rd. Proposed ordinance 5-13-2, amendment of Title 5 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Business Licenses and Regulations for ITM and Food Venture License, the latest restriction to be referred to safety services for hearing on June 3rd. Proposed ordinance 5-13-3, amendment of Title 3 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Revenue and Finance for Tax Assessment, Weight of Rain Through Compensation, to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on June 13th. Proposed ordinance 5-13-4, amendment of Title 13 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Public Services for Civil Connection Minutes, to be referred to the Public Works Committee for hearing on June 3rd. The following three resolutions all have to do with board orders authorizing the issuance of bonds, all three are to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on June 16. One is authorizing the issue of 2.5 million bonds to the city to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, repair, alteration, and equipment, equipping of programs and athletic facilities in the City of Cranston, and authorizing the city to apply for federal estate advances for that purposes, and authorizing the issue of 2.5 million temporary notes for that purpose, and authorizing the advances from the General Treasury for that purpose. The second is authorizing the issue of $6 million bonds to the city to finance the repair construction, renovation, and remediation and mitigation of drainage and flooding problems throughout the City of Cranston, authorizing the city to apply for federal estate advances for that purpose, and authorizing the issue of 6 million temporary notes for that purpose, and authorizing advances from the General Treasury for that purpose. The third one, the resolution is authorizing the issue of 900,000 bonds for the city, of which not more than 600,000 shall be used to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipment of the new public water board to the Arlington section of the City of Cranston, and not less than 300,000 shall be used to finance repairs, renovations, and upgrades in equipment for all public water boards in the City of Cranston, and authorizing the city to apply for federal estate advances for that purpose, and authorizing the issue of 900,000 temporary notes for that purpose, and authorizing advances from the General Treasury for that purpose. Again, those are to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on June 13th. Next, we have the resolution authorizing the city to consent to mutual aid amendments with the City of Warwick and the Town of Johnston with respect to its police departments. This, this to be referred to the Odins Committee for hearing on June 13th. We have a joint pro-location for National Bureau of Rising for a pro-location on only Almond Road to be referred to Public Works for hearing on June 3rd. We have a property deed to claim from the Jenny Smith to be referred to the Queens Committee for hearing on June 3rd. That's all I have.
Before we continue, Mr. Strong, could you explain the bond stores?
Thank you, Council. For our, my conversation with our bond council, the issuance of the three resolutions is for the total amount of the issuance. So, in other words, it is a lot more than what we're gonna go bonding for. And the reason why they do that is they rather come before the council, get approvals, so that we don't have to keep on submitting resolutions for every time we borrow. It does not mean that I'm gonna be borrowing to that magnitude of sum of money. Whatever I borrow will be presented to the council and let you know exactly what I'm borrowing and what it's for, so that we, uh, you don't have to be concerned that they're giving me a, an open checkbook to just borrow money or to, to pay for certain capital projects. That's not what we intend to do. It just gives us the authority to go forward, replanning, and as I stated, we're still at that 10.2 million total for all the capital projects that we discussed, especially during the budget session. The other point I wanna make, and that will be brought up by the way at the Finance Committee meeting, I'll have that for you. We're scheduled to close, um, in July, probably only on July 20th. We've met with all three radio agencies last week, we had very, uh, I would say productive discussions with all three. Uh, we're hoping that meetings, which is the toughest right now of all three radio agencies, will look at Cranston better than it did a year or two ago. As you know, we have a radio in, but it was a nugget of outlook. We're hoping that that nugget of outlook will change to a stable outlook. At this point, based on my discussions with our fiscal advisor, it looks like it could be 50/50 that we will have that changed. The, all three radio agencies were very pleased about our discussions in going forward with the pension plan, the rent from the liability, and also how the school is, turned around their finances, they're making their second payment this year, and scheduled for their third next year for the deficit reduction plan. Those two issues are probably the most important for our bond rating right now. And, so, they were very pleased, and it was positive discussions, how that turned, you know, how that will determine what our rating will be. I can't answer that until the analyst goes to the committee and they get their results from them. But I wanted the council to know that during this process, it's been favorable discussions, and it bodes well for the city now and also down the road. And I also want to just mention one thing, we sent out about 8,000 vending notices to motor vehicle, uh, pass-through taxpayers that go back this year and pass, and I want especially Councilman Vicino to know that we've been having a lot of activity, and based on my discussion with Treasurer Capirano, that highlighted paragraph that we put in there based on what you proposed some months ago, seems to, in his opinion, has had a positive effect. So, I want you to know that.
Thank you. Okay. No other new business, so. Motion to assign to the proper committees for public hearing? Motion, please, your second. Second. Any discussion of motion? See, you, you, please take the floor.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stipos?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Vasito?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Fina.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lee's business on the clerk's desk. The sewer ordinance has been referred back to the Public Works Committee and will be on the agenda for June 3rd. And the ordinance is, ordinance amendment to Title 13.08 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Public Service Sewer Service System, Title 13.12, entitled Waste Water Disposal Services. And we're awaiting the conclusion of the D N's public comment period. I would ask the administration on the status of the labor's contract at this time?
Both received. We had, through the chair, if I may, that has been received. We now have an unfiled executed copy.
Oh, okay, fine. Rhode Island Department of Transportation Police Detail, M O A, is that straightened We're still waiting for DOT to sign it, return it to us. Information purposes only, ordinance amendment to Title 10, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Ashley and Hazelton Streets, continued April 11th, 2013, it failed the committee on May 16th, 2013. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion, please, your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.